It is Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, and it is 7:00 PM. I will ask the clerk to give it, please call it over.
Trustee Burke, trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Perkins, trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Shaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
President Richardson.
Yes, ma'am. Would you please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Aegis? My pledge of aegis is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made visible for liberty and justice for all. Agenda item for this evening is approval for minutes both of the special committee of the whole and the rescheduled board trustees meeting for May 2019 last month. Are there any questions or edits for the clerk on the minutes? Then Chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items for A, minutes of the special committee of the whole, and B, minutes of the rescheduled board trustees, May 2019. My trustee Shaller, may I please have a second?
Thank you.
My trustee here, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair would like to command us to consent that the record remain open for a period of five business days. Where any necessary, you can take a vote on the minutes. Without objection, so order. Agenda item number five, let me turn it over to the administrator to set this up. And we are delighted to have such talented... You guys just raised the average IQ in this place an awful lot. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
So, Lake Barrington was chosen by these UIC students as a location for them to complete their urban studies class project, the capstone project. The five students are in the senior capstone experience. They are all now graduated. Not good, they're all shaking their heads, they all pass. So, I will let them come up, introduce themselves, and talk about their project. And I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation for us tonight. And just so you know, all of our trustees have a copy of your report as well. So, come on up and introduce yourselves, and we'll go over them.
And welcome, welcome, welcome.
Alright, hello everybody. Alright, so, thank you everyone from Lake Barrington Village Board, and thank you especially Karen for working with us this semester and helping us this way. My name is Rudy. I just finished my urban studies degree with UIC, and I'll be moving on to the master's program.
I'm Max. I just finished my urban studies degree at UIC as well, and I'm also going to the master's program.
My name is Sarah. I currently work in real estate property management down in Schaumburg. And yeah, I completed my urban studies degree with Minor Code Policy.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Garcia. Also completed my undergrad at USC Urban Studies, and continuing on with my education to complete my masters in urban.
Chris Staple.
As you give your presentation, if it's easier, there's a portable mic or phone there. We just have to turn it on at the counter there. So, just so you know.
Alright, well, this is our Lake Barrington commercial revitalization project. And, as you know, this is Lake Barrington. And we did a lot of research in the near town, found, you know, when you were incorporated.
Please use the mic. Use the mic, please.
Alright, so, this is Lake Barrington, created 1959. Total population around 5,000, median age 57.5. Median household income around $100,000. And you are a home rural municipality, and you are an oasis of gracious countryside living and open spaces.
Hello, some background information on Lake Barrington's land use. So, it's primarily a single-use residential area attached with some residential acreage, with the exception of Lake Barrington shores, which is on the northeast corner, which is primarily condominiums. Our focus area is in the south of Lake Barrington, which is Pepper Road Business Park. So, Pepper Road Business Park. And it's very interesting because 15% of it is vacant, while 58% of it is industrial, and 23% of it is commercial area. It has a huge opportunity to attract tax, sales tax revenues, which Lake Barrington lacks right now, or is stagnated over the couple of years. So, definitely Pepper Road Business Park is really an attractive area, especially with Northwest Highway right on the intersection to attract new businesses. So, our Lake Barrington shores, as you guys know, very well-known, a gated community, very beautiful. Very, it's really beautiful, I love it. And our focus area again, Pepper Road Business Park, mainly, it is mainly commercial, and that is one of the things that we are trying to do is, I mean, I'm sorry, it is mainly industrial. As I said before, 58% of it is industrial. And what we are definitely trying to do is try to revitalize the area from it being industrial to it being a little more commercial, so we could attract these sales tax revenues in the long run. So, a challenge that we have is to strike a balance between the Lake Barrington shore, Lake Barrington residents, and the village to the village's semi-rural brand in order to meet the needs of the villages as much as possible. And again, our closer area at Pepper Road Business Park. Our blue area is our commercial area, which is again 23%. Our orange area is going to be our industrial area. It is not as attractive. It definitely needs to be more attractive in order for people to be attracted to this area as well. Some pictures of, one afternoon, we ended up coming out to Pepper Road Business Park and trying to see the picture. We just wanted to look at the site. A lot of the area does look really nice, especially the newer parts, such as like the coffee place that we saw. The gym complex has a lot of attractive thing. The afternoon that we actually ended up going to, there was a lot of cars literally all along the road. We could definitely have seized that opportunity of all the people that are coming out to the sports complex by attracting more commercial, more restaurants, and stuff.
So, I focused on the demographic analysis of the market study. So, all of our data are from the US Census American Community Survey Five-Year Estimates. We used the 2013 to 2017 for the most recent estimates, and then 2008 to 2012 for comparison. And the main purpose of this analysis is to identify what kinds of markets exist or are emerging in Lake Barrington and neighboring areas, and how those could or should influence development in the business park. So, this is our market area. There are six census tracts, 23 census tracts that are all within a 15-minute drive from the business park. It's right in the middle. Population of the market area is around 108,000, which is relatively the same as it has been. And as the map shows, most of the growth is west of Lake Barrington, particularly in the Cary Hill, Compton areas down, and also southeast of Lake Barrington in Deer Park, Hildir areas. Population change by age shows that there is significant growth among the elderly. Just about every age group above 55 saw significant population growth. Active millennials, aged 20 to 34. And it's actually reflected in the map to the right. Median age increased in most of the census tracts, particularly in the upper half parts of the market area. And the southeastern and southwestern parts decreased in median age, and these are the more urban suburban areas, the more commercial areas of the market area. So, also looked at mobility in the market area, showed that the mobility rates are very high among millennials and very low for the elderly, suggesting that the growth of millennials are due to an influx of millennials moving in in recent years, while the growth in the elderly are just due to an aging population. And also, you can see that the mobility rates for 0-4 are also very high, suggesting that there are a lot of new families moving in to the market area. So, median household income, like with Lake Barrington, is around 99,000, increased by 5%. Most growth, as you can see, is a 65-over age group per person, income increased by 26%. So, the market area is still predominantly owner-occupied, however, it has been changing in recent years. The number of people living in owner-occupied units decreased by 3%. The number of people living in renter-occupied units increased by 24%. And as the map shows, people in recent years are opting to rent. So, people who moved in between 2015 to 2017, 42% of them were renters. And these are renters that have pretty high incomes. 67% of new renters make $75,000 or more. And the number of renters making $75,000 or more increased by 16%. And a lot of these renters are also starting to build new structures, like houses and townhouses. So, the single-tenant homes shared in total rental market area, total rental market increased by 16%. And race, a significant, Latino presence east, north, and west of Lake Barrington, as the map shows, particularly Wakanda, northern Lake Zurich east. And just to tie everything in, and what all those mean for the market, for the market study, the growth in elderly and millennial populations indicate that there's demand for businesses that would attract both populations, so businesses like a pub, brewery, or a coffee shop. Influx of new families indicate that there's demand for businesses that are more family-friendly, so like a repertory, maybe a home improvement store. And also the increase in household income as well as expendable income as people are starting to turn in. So, and the after the concentrations of Latinos, indicating that there could be space for businesses to catering to Latinos. And of course, we don't want to propose businesses that would compete with existing businesses. So, the next step is a retail gap analysis.
So, again, to better understand demographics and their relationship to local businesses, we perform a retail gap analysis. We focus on our prospective businesses in regards to their locality, their relation to existing businesses, as Chris mentioned, and the demographic trends and desirability within Lake Barrington. So, focusing on locality, we wanted to focus on the businesses nearby. We honed in on 5, 10, and 15-minute driving radiuses around Pepper Road Business Park. This mainly includes commercial areas in Barrington, Lake Zurich, Cary, Deer Park, and Fox River Road. So, in relation to existing businesses, Pepper Road Business Park, we wanted to assure that no prospective tenants pose any competition or threat to the existing businesses. This being said, we recommend businesses that were not on the list above, and we also wanted to complement the existing businesses. So, finally, we use data from RJIS business analysts to better understand these markets, and as the residents in Lake Barrington would support, now of which we could be capitalized on in the redevelopment of the Pepper Road Business Park. So, using the retail gap analysis, we focused on several key stone store types, including hotels, specialty food markets, and a breakfast cafe. And building upon those, we proposed a lunch restaurant, liquor market, household cleaning service, a tech outlet, and a men and women's clothing retailer. So, looking at the locality of existing hotels within a 5-minute driving range, we discovered that they do not align with the preferences found in Lake Barrington. These hotels were not safe or adequate for the residents and their families. So, we proposed a new hotel that could offer, again, a safer and reliable units for traveling athletes from the Canlin Sports Complex, as well as traveling doc percent physicians from Good Shepherd. Even more rare, a specialty food market would provide a unique asset to the village of Lake Barrington unlike a Chulasco or Ariana's. Similarly, this type of business would require much less space, which could allow for complementary businesses to come in and add on to them. And lastly, it became clear through retail gap analysis that residents in Lake Barrington were not spending much on breakfast food as they were as lunch and dinner. With this, we concluded that it's largely due to an inaccessibility of these restaurants despite their popularity, as well as overall lack of appeal, again, similar to the hotels. So, to attract these desired tenants, we wanted to use various business incentives and funding mechanisms. A business assistance grant, as I'm sure you're all aware, works to assist tenants with build-outs and moving expenses that are associated with moving in. Saying permit grants, as well as tip districts allowed to incentivize developers to reshape the land.
Alright, so, we focused on two areas, so mainly Zone B. This is Zone A, which is near Kelsey Road and Route 14. It consists of Kelsey, a bunch of the areas around there, and the residential area around there as well. Total acreage is 7.21 acres. It has access to a traffic light at 14 and Kelsey. And the idea for this area is that we want to have a large retail space here, which could be a grocery store, a specialty grocery store, a smaller shopping center, which can be subdivided into multiple different types of units, and two medium-sized retail or food areas, which could be used for a breakfast place or any other type of retail area. The main takeaways from this is that first, it's flexible. So, if you don't have the land to develop on a certain area at once, you can wait and move it later. So, it's kind of like a Lego set, the fact that you can build one area later and move on to the next part at a certain point down the road. Another important part that we want to stress here is that there should be green space, lots of tree cover over the parking lots, and different types of flowers as well. There should also be the extension of a multi-use path from Kelsey Road down to this area along 14. And one of the most important things is that we think there should be a public plaza, some type of war memorial, or a sebo, or water fountain, that would really tie in and make the Pepper Road Business Park stand out as a gateway to Lake Barrington, and a public meeting space for the residents of the community.
Alright, so, the first thing I looked at for Zone A was the mobility and accessibility to it. Through the Illinois Department of Transportation, I found that 22,000 vehicles, accompanied by 1,350 trucks, traveled on the highway along Zone A on an average daily basis. Currently, the site's current conditions is there's no multi-use paths, and it has 1.5 or so access points. We want to add the last half of an access point onto it by creating a left turn lane onto North Hillview Drive for people who are heading southeast along, on the highway. The main reason is because at the corner there, on the far left of this SketchUp design, that's where we're implementing the grocery store. So, I created this design through SketchUp. And as you can see, there's the four individual buildings, and as well the park space. And in the foreground and along the side of Kelsey Road there is the multi-use paths which connect the entire area together. So, first is the grocery store. The design for most of these buildings is to stick with brick, because it looks the best, and that's what the business park is starting to head towards. So, with the grocery store, it's large enough, but not too large to... It will attract more smaller specialty food markets, rather than big, like really big corporations, such as Walmart, which would be good for the area. And as well with this parking space design, though green and spacious it is, there's a total of 186 individual parking stalls. For this L-shaped building, it's designed to house four, or possibly a fifth, small retail business. One, the types, or store sizes don't necessarily need to be an individual building due to the size of their operation. And last here, in this view of Zone A, there's the two smaller buildings, which are roughly about the same square footage, as well the park. The building that's right next to the park, where in our plan we've recommended that that would be the, a little bit of a brunch, like a brunch cafe, so that after people enjoy breakfast, you know, maybe on a nice calm Saturday or Sunday morning, they could step outside and view, and enjoy a little bit of the green space as well.
Alright, then we also have Zone B. Zone B is at the corner of 14 and Pepper Road. Alright, so the total acreage here is 3.45 acres, and it's encompassing the Pasquayzy Gardens, the former Pasquayzy Gardens, the vacant land that's right next to it, as well as some other industrial lots, which in the future could be transformed into more of a commercial-type business. Alright, so, here again, we have in the pink, a hotel location. This would be no taller than two or three stories. We also have in the red, in our large retail location, not as large as the previous grocery store, but something where you could fit in some type of family store, retail store type. And then we also again have two more medium-sized retail or food locations. Some important parts about this is again, it is interchangeable, it is flexible, so if you don't have the land for one area right now, you can build what you do have. And later on, if the current owners want to sell, you can build onto that plan. We also have the extension of the access roads, which are connected with Roundabout to make sure that people aren't cutting through this Zone B area. And again, we want to make sure there's a lot of green space, a lot of trees, and extending that multi-use pathway, so that way it's connecting the entirety of the Pepper Road Business Park and surrounding areas.
So, again, for Zone B, my analysis of mobility and accessibility. The vehicle use has actually increased for Zone B. 26,200 vehicles this time, and as well 2,050 trucks. Once again, no multi-use paths, and there's two access points, but we still want to add that little extra half back of an access point here in this red block on the map for people heading northwest, so they're able to make a right-hand turn lane onto Zone B. And you can actually see that turn lane in the top middle here of this image. So, this is the full extent view of Zone B, once again created on SketchUp. It shows the four individual buildings and a somewhat, kind of strange parking lot designs for a couple of these spaces. The main reason for that is because we did not want to overlap too many of the land parcels to accommodate one individual building for this market study. We were going to leave that little bit of hard work to you guys. So, the first building you see here is the hotel. This is a very simple design, three stories and a total of 72 rooms, and that's only counting the second and third story, and leaving a lot of open space in the first story. For these two, these buildings would just be too more, too simply to put it, too simple, more, just business retail businesses. They have no specific recommendation from us so far. And this last one, given a little lack of appearance to it, and a little crazy parking lot design, we think this would be a good place for a very large retail. Possibly maybe something either family-related, or even a men and women's clothing store. And it's had about a little bit over 100 parking spots.
We have family members here tonight. Let me, I'd like all of you to stand up, so we can recognize you for at least two. It's so easy to get discouraged about things today, and then you see such five, five such remarkable young adults. We've left you a hell of a mess to clean up for the rest of the next generation. But when I hear professional presentation skills, clear intellect, you are all to be commended. We have a custom of going around the horns, and people can ask questions or make comments. And we're all parents up here, so forgive me. I recognize you not merely for your remarkable professionalism. And I know I speak for your parents when this is, it feels great when the last one gets out of college. But I also see very bright futures here. I particularly appreciated a few things I'll say is, I appreciate the additional focus on Latino demographics. I spent five years on the Board of the Institute for Latino Studies at the University of Notre Dame, and worked a lot on those issues. So, I appreciate that our neighbors have a growing Latino population. We have one or two businesses here. I speak Muslim, and we certainly want to encourage a diverse economic base, and that means partly the ownership, so thank you for that. The hotel, I think, is just spot-on. You know, I think that's absolutely right, and our view has always been informally that we've helped more quantitatively validate that Canlin and Good Shepherd could be a driver. You know, making the economics work for the initial development is always the challenge, getting it, but there are models for that, and this is very helpful data for us. When Canlin first approached us, and they did not own it, they were not the original developer, they bought it out of receivers and distribution. We knew we would never have enough rooftops to really generate a large retail, kind of be one. So, trip generation is going to become the proxy for rooftops. And that's why Canlin and Good Shepherd were always doing so. I think you guys got right to the heart of the matter on that. And I'm also on the Board of Visitors of Graduate School of Public Policy at Fairbanks, so your academic training is one that I have great appreciation for as well. The specialty stores in the Brexus Cafe, Andy Burke, who chairs our Business Economic Development Committee, he's not here tonight, but I know he's working very hard on exactly that thought, because there is, you know, you guys are looking through the windshield at the rest of your lives. There's a few of us in this room who are starting to look at the rearview mirror a little bit. And so, a lot more of our meetings are held at breakfast than at night. I'm looking at you, Dave Radclaw. So, I really think the notion of a breakfast cafe is exactly right. And this is a town, in fact, the gentleman sitting behind you are with the veterans of Lake Barrington shores. And so, the notion of a town center and a gateway that honors our veterans, we passed this board seven to zero with enthusiasm. Did any of you grow up in this area?
I live in Raleigh.
Okay.
Wait, sorry.
Okay, the reason I ask is you've come to know us quite well. I'm interested in how you tackled this project, because you all had to sit down, probably at a Starbucks, but maybe in a conference room at the library. How did you assign workload? And how did you come up with the table of organization for this? Because this was exceptionally well done. Your parents should be very, very proud of you. Good time to ask them for help on a car. So, I'd love to know how you tackled the organization of this and then the workflow management.
It just came naturally. I don't think we sat down and like assigned tasks.
Oh, you used the microphone, did you?
I think it just came naturally. Like, we didn't really sit down and assign tasks. I am particularly good with Excel, so I figured that I should do the demographic analysis. Max is good at SketchUp, so obviously he would do that. And Rudy is good at GAS and all that. Travis is very knowledgeable in real estate, so she focused on tenants. And Jeff, we did the software, we used called it Footprint, so for the land use. So, it's just natural.
Well, I congratulate you. Let me yield it this time to my colleague on my left, trustee Mitchell. Questions or comments?
Comments first, guys. You all did a fabulous job. I have paid a lot of money for a lot less before, so let me tell you, this was quite impressive. And it is nice that you worked together so well as a team, and you've all sort of played to your strengths. That's probably, if nothing else, is one of the best things that you got out of your education at UIC in doing that, because I think that's the ability to put this into, you know, to print and the slides, and then present it so well, is a huge testament to how hard you all have worked, and every one of you, and that's fabulous. I am also really excited about having some of this data, particularly in terms of the change in our population of millennials, and the contrast, and the competition with elder services, and trying to balance that. And it's one of the things that I've looked at and worked in the field of elder care and healthcare. And I think there's a lot to be said for the community that gets that mix right. And I think that's, there's tremendous potential. So, I really very much appreciate all the hard work that each one of you have put in this. Thank you.
Trustee Thompson.
James, President. First of all, great work. Just to reiterate what Trusty Mitchell said, it's a wonderful job, and I hope that UIC is proud of you because you've really shown what your degrees are capable of producing. I also want to note, I was really impressed with the information about the Hispanic demographics. It was that information because that allows us to expand our demographic position in a way that we really weren't considering before, which to me says that it expands the size of our opportunities. I mean, the depth of what you did is terrific. Thank you very much. I don't think I could ask and tell you anymore. Thank you.
Trusty Shaw.
Thank you, President Richardson. I echo what has been said previously. Obviously, the work that you did is beyond what one would expect from, I guess, a project, and therefore, the insight that you put into it, the research that you put into it. But I'm most impressed by what your recommendations are. And we've talked about things that would probably go well down along Northwest Highway. Only two places we can really generate additional retail sales, or that would be Northwest Highway and up the north end of the marketplace. And so we casually mentioned food store, hotel, things like that. But to actually lay it out and show where it's appropriate to have something like that, and the size and magnitude, we know we're not going to get a Costco, we know we're not going to get a Walmart. You know, you really want a gourmet, small, and yet fits the demographics and then what's going on around here, as well as the hotel, which would fit in again to what Canlin is doing and what the hospital has, and what people here have. But there's really nothing, as you pointed out, down the road in Barrington, or even up to the north, you get Crystal Lake, Holiday Inn up there, or the Holiday Inn over in Lake Zurich. So you really do have the, and the right size. Seventy-two units, fits perfect. So I think, as I said, the research that you did and the recommendations that you resulted in, I think are excellent. And we definitely appreciate all the work that you did for this, and I hope we can utilize it to our best advantage in economic development. So when you come back after you get your masters, you can come back here and enjoy the fruits of your recommendations to us.
Stay overnight at the hotel.
Stay overnight at the hotel. Shop at the little store, go up to Canlin, whatever. But you're always welcome in Lake Barrington. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Trusty Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's always fun being asked to try to make upset or regretful. But I just want to say a couple things. It's good to hear from a, let's just say, maybe a generation or two below our pay grade here. But it's good to hear your age who talk about the kind of things that we worry about up here. We deal with these problems every day, and you're going to go into a career where you're going to help people like us solve some problems, and you, you've hit the nail on the head tonight. Years ago, I was asked to take a look at some national security issues that really affect the world for the United States. And one of the things that I brought out during my presentation was the fact that urbanization of the entire world, with migration from world to cities. In those days, we had ten megacity, cities with ten million or more people. Now we have twenty-five. We're going to go to seventy-five before the century's over. And so then they said, well, that's really good. Go back and tell us what are the things going on inside the United States that's affecting us? And you had one problem ahead. The three things we came up with is the national debt, the current deficit, and the demographic changes we're seeing in our country right now. And I think Jim mentioned it very well, the consideration of those changes are things that I think provide a power curve. You recognize it, and so we got to get on the stage, figure that out, too, but I appreciate it. Good work. You got mom and dad, you got your nice work.
Again, we are most grateful. I'm going to ask the administrator to come down. We have some mementos, a way of expressing our appreciation and our thanks. They're not.
They're not wrapped up really nicely. We got your paper copies of the report, which you may never open since everything's on your computer, but it's nice to, you know, all the lights go out, you have a copy of the report. We have a Lake Barrington notebook, which again is paper. And one day, you're going to want to write stuff down, rather than typing it in. And we have like thirteen water bottles. So open. So all you can get paid.
And I'll just further observe as you all look to move into your careers, let me validate something you did here tonight. You all dressed professionally. I cannot tell you about what you did. The second thing is you spoke clearly, and I have to work hard and slow my cadence down. And I could understand you. I'm not even wearing my hearing aids today. So I'm grateful you dressed professionally, you spoke professionally. You're a credit to this. Those are skills that are going to take you a long way. And everybody up here has had to give these kinds of presentations in the course of our careers. And it's always a little disconcerting when you're standing before a group of people who are your parents or your grandparents' age. So let me commend you for being able to be calm and effective in an audience that might not have been, on its face, demographically aligned. I have two daughters who are twenty-nine and twenty-six, and they are forever telling me how I am completely clueless in contemporary life. So I'm satisfied with that. I'm very proud of all of you. I'm very proud of all of you. And I'm very grateful to your service to our community, and you should consider yourselves very, very good representatives of your university and of your families. Thank you all. God bless you. I'm Mirojena. Item five tonight. I have two items. One is, I would like to recognize the leadership of the representatives of the veterans in Lake Barrington Shores to come forward. And then we have impromptu report from Kathleen Scott on some recent resident focus groups that, which really nicely tie to the report we just heard. So Tom?
Yes.
While we all know you, Fred, for the record, if you could please introduce yourself on the microphone.
Yes. Tom. Tom Gilder, President of Lake Barrington Shores and President of the Veterans of Lake Barrington. I'm pleased to be here. I understand our request has been accepted, so I'd like to say a few words. My driver's parked in the five-minute parking.
Knocked on the door and told you away on that.
The Veterans of LBS, thank you for your belief in us and the decision to support our activities through 2019 and 2020. Our organization is committed to providing our resources to plan and execute programs that address the issues of the plight of military personnel within our community, within our county, and within our state. We rely upon our strength of our military background to muster and focus the energy and commitment to accomplish all that we do with the highest professional, highest degree professionalism. We are proud of the role of our role within Lake Barrington Shores and within the village of Lake Barrington. At that, we extend this pledge to you. Ask us, if we can do it, we will do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, I think we, I speak for all of us and happy to yield to my colleagues. We're very grateful. It was a marvelous program on Memorial Day. I was privileged to be part of it and attend. But it's all the other service things you can do up here. It's certainly meaningful to me to attend either Memorial Day or Veterans Day in service. But what has so impressed me about the organization is its commitment to helping the other three hundred and sixty-three days. And I'm grateful for that. Let me recognize Trusty Reardon.
Well, just to follow up, I appreciate Tom, your comments, and we'll take you up on your offer.
Yes.
Don't worry about that. But I also want to say the leadership among the Veterans of LBS probably distinguish themselves because you're probably the best leadership in their community, other than our president, of course. But I would say they wrap a lot for prestige in Lake Barrington, and also Bill Heinrich, both of whom are, in fact, all three of them are neighbors, so I got recognition. But they do tremendous work through the community year-round. It's not only around Veterans Day and Memorial Day, but they're all there, of course.
Trusty Shaw.
I like what has been said, but again, President Richardson was there for the Memorial Day ceremony. And not only do you do an excellent job with all the activities of the Veterans Organization, which is the largest organization in Lake Barrington Shores.
Still.
Still. On the special days, Memorial Day and Veterans Day, but throughout the year with all the other activities that the veterans have. And I'm kind of proud to say, but a little ashamed, Memorial Day, there were more representatives, officials from the village there than there were condo residents. And I think that's a shame. We had five, there were four condo residents that were there. And I just, I think, one of the things that the veterans have done is try to bond the entire village together. I've been doing this long enough where it was kind of we versus them, LBS versus the village. And your organization has done more to bring it all together than anyone that I know. So in addition to all the great work that you do, I think that's another accomplishment, and I personally appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you. Trusty Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, since I'm a member of the Veterans of Lake Barrington Shores, I'm a little biased. However, I must say that the leadership of the Veterans of Lake Barrington Shores, with respect to veterans and their families, has tremendous impact on them, on their lives, and for example, the children for whom special grants are made for them to continue their education. It's just a terrific opportunity for people to know how well the Veterans of Lake Barrington Shores take care of veterans and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Mitchell.
Thank you, Tom, and Bill, Dave, and Trusty Thompson, my neighbor here, as well. You all have done a fabulous job. And with this many veterans around, I would say that I would salute you, but I'd get busted by the Colonel over here and anybody else if I tried to salute. But thank you, I do salute your efforts and how you have brought things together. It's been fabulous.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
But because of you, that we do this. It's a number of years ago that we got together, talked about what could we do as a team that's really blossomed into this healthy, wealthy, not healthy, wealthy, healthy, vibrant organization. And we call on you, we appreciate it, and as I mentioned, we're glad you believe in us.
Well, you and John, this will not have breakfast about seven years ago on this. We didn't have a cafe close by. And tomorrow is the seventy-fifth anniversary of D-Day, and my dad is ninety-seven, and all the vets here know he was a World War II veteran. Got to see some action towards the end of the war. And I think it's really kind of a wonderful combination tonight as we honor the veterans. Most of us who are the children of veterans have heard the stories, and it's about honoring service. If you want more of something, you honor it. If you want less of something, you minimize it. And you remember. And what I really appreciate about the programs, this is the old marketing guy at UIC coming out, is we rightly honor sacrifice in service because it tells these guys who are just starting out, this is how you're supposed to get ahead and contribute to your society and the country better. Military is a rare way to do it. There are plenty of other ways to do it as well that are equally honorable. And so I appreciate the fact that you are an institution that honors, that honors. Because we don't do enough of that in our society. The reason I wanted to make those comments to these wonderful young people tonight is we want to honor you because we want more of you. And so this is what it looks like when you have a lifetime of service. And think about that in the years to come, because my dad is ninety-seven, can barely speak anymore, but he still remembers his daughter's dad number from World War II. Doesn't remember anything else. So I'm very grateful, as you know. And this board has always been a vote seven to zero for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I can move on. Kathleen Scott has worked on a great project for us that also relates to the presentation earlier from Kathleen. And as we did some voter focus groups, or President focus groups, on community amenities. She gave a more detailed presentation and a committee of the whole prior to this, but I'd love for her to come forward and give some highlights for the record.
Hello, good evening. I'm Kathleen Scott with Scott Partners. And we, Jim Thompson is the person who brought this to fruition, who suggested it. And Jim, did you want to?
Yes, thank you. Yes, just a little bit of an introduction, especially for the people in the audience and those on our TV over there. Village President Kevin Richardson is taking a significant step forward in Lake Barrington's long-term growth and prosperity with this inaugural series of resident focus groups. This report provides an understanding of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats with respect to Lake Barrington. And as a side, you young people have done a wonderful job providing us with significant information to handle all of those areas. And we, again, thank you for it. As we move forward with economic development and further develop our community relations, this report's analysis will be used to monitor growth and adjust our programs in planning as necessary. There's a lot more here, but it's not necessary. But go ahead, please. Thank you.
Okay, well, this will be, as President Richardson suggested, more going over some of the highlights on what we learned from our focus groups. We're fortunate, our demographics were fairly well-balanced by gender, the age was fairly well-balanced, length of residency, which was something we wanted to really get a feel for what new people thought versus what our longtime residents thought, and if they shared the same vision for the future of the village. And so that was balanced in the way they gave us that information. Education, household income, marital status, and household size were all pretty predictable for the demographics here in Lake Barrington. It was interesting to see all the places that our, the focus group participants came from. Most, the majority were from Chicago, or the largest number were from Chicago. And then they were scattered everywhere, from other suburbs all the way to Dubai. And I thought that gave us a good reference point because they came from different backgrounds point, because they came from different backgrounds and different locations. And one of the first questions we asked was where they moved, one of the reasons that they moved to Lake Barrington. Why did they choose Lake Barrington as their destination for their new home? And as we might have expected, schools were a huge part of it, as they are for any, any location that is looking for a family-oriented resident base. And schools are very important to families. So it was schools, and then nature, and then it just kind of went along the standards of housing and lot size. And there were some interesting things, like the horses, having horses here in Lake Barrington was a draw. And the open land, no streetlights and no sidewalks, were another draw. And nobody wants to change that. So I think, I think a lot of people that live here like it just the way it is and don't want to see too much change as far as in their cycle, in their corner of the world here in Lake Barrington. Improvements are always, are always good, though. So under amenities, this was our amenities discussion, and most of the people, a vast number, wanted open land, or liked the open land, liked the large lots, the trails, a lot of nature-oriented responses. And then we also did a dot exercise where people were given 24 stickers that were dots. And then the amenities spoken about in the discussion were placed on papers on the walls. And then each resident was asked to get up and go around and allocate the dots according to how important each of those amenities was specifically to them. And schools came out on top again, and a lot of nature came back to it as well. I think a lot of it was friendly people, helpful village staff, things that we might not know that they notice, they do notice. After amenities, we had a look at challenges and see where people weren't happy. And as to be expected, property taxes overwhelmingly took the first place. And there were a couple of challenges in park district programming and reciprocity with neighboring towns. People were concerned about overdevelopment, but not within the commercial corridor. They were concerned about it going into the residential areas. So I think that's an important point to make, because they are looking forward to what the presentation tonight was talking about. They do want to see development, but in specific areas of the commercial corridor. When we moved over to the dots for the challenges, again, property tax, losing open space, home values, all the things that I think any homeowner in any suburb is concerned about, in Illinois particularly. And then when we get down to the hard questions, what challenges would actually cause them to consider relocation, leaving Lake Barrington. And the most important point I want to point out is that those that spoke up and conversed about it, it was never about leaving the village of Lake Barrington. It was about leaving the state of Illinois. So there's not much we can do about that. But, and again, the challenges that might influence them. Number one, property taxes continuing to increase. And that was tied with state issues, pension, corruption, population loss. And then flooding issues and other things that they had concerns about, not necessarily that they were experiencing. And we did, we went in and we asked them what features and amenities they would suggest for development. And park district programs was, was important, especially to the families of children, and other things along linking the paths, promoting community events, events at the farm, and basically, community-oriented things they were looking for. And which ties in perfectly with the presentation, we asked what businesses or services do they feel would enhance the village. Number one was restaurants, small local businesses, and keeping the commercial development of the Pepper Road area. They didn't want franchises, they wanted gourmet stores, and businesses compatible with the village. So I think it does, it does parallel very well with today's, tonight's presentation. When asked what the one word to describe Lake Barrington, which is kind of hard to nail people down to one word, but we did. And the word that was, that respondents chose most often was peaceful, followed by beautiful and natural. And then a lot of words that accurately describe the village, unique, nirvana, retreat, surprising, serene, country, quaint. So I think that what we, how we see ourselves here is how residents see the village. And I think that's, that's pretty hard to attain, that level of agreement. So did anyone have any questions?
Happy to yield to trustees your questions. Trustee Mitchell, anything you'd like to ask?
Thank you. It is, it is a wonderful parallel, and sort of coming together between the report from our Capstone students and the data that came together tonight. So it's fabulous, it's very encouraging. Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell.
Or excuse me, Trustee Thompson. This is what you can read together. Trustee President. Well, two things. Number one, having, as President Richardson has done, done many focus groups before, and you just, you and our village administrator, Karen Dolman, our village clerk and executive assistant, Lisa Penny-Tolappa, have done a wonderful job in putting this together. It's just terrific. And I applaud you for that. And one of the interesting things is, while this is a small study, if you combine it with what our young friends have done here with the market study, they fold gently in together, and which is really nice, because it gives us a really broad picture of what we need to do in the following years to improve what, what we do for our residents and for improving our business capabilities and potential. So thank you all very much. I'm never going to stop thanking you.
Thank you.
Well, and you know, you have characteristically been modest about your approach, which is very nice, Trustee Shaw. I want to thank you, you put a lot of swag into this, and you've brought some real experience that from your prior career at AAA has really helped. Because we have to get above the din of everyday life to get people's attention about why, why settle here, why invest here.
To have a raised family.
And I'm grateful for your indefatible efforts.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Trustee Shaw.
I like what everyone else has said thus far, and that is that this, it's interesting that both presentations on what we have now and what the future should bring are both presented the same evening. Because it really, it works together to show what we've attempted to accomplish in the past is working and is appreciated by the people that live here. And yet we have a ways to go to not only meet those expectations, but to keep people from fleeing the state of Illinois despite the conditions that are here. And if we can keep those people happy and add some amenities, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. But it's interesting that both those presentations came out tonight, because it just, it further supports what you have recommended. And again, just like everyone else, we thank you very, very much for that. And I hope you'll come back when we accomplish all this. Thank you.
Trustee Rick.
Kathleen, thank you very much. It was a good presentation. I'm sorry that the group didn't get to see the full rollout that we got in committing the hall. It was very well done.
Thank you, Kathleen.
No, no.
We're going to move quickly to the consent agenda. And then after the consent agenda, we're going to take a short break. I know some of our guests perhaps may want to get on their way. So we'll get through this very quickly, and then we'll take a short break. The consent agenda is something that Illinois law committees municipalities to do, which is to move by omnibus vote and block a number of items that have reached board consensus into a single unanimous roll call voting trustees. Tonight, we have three items. They would be AA compensation ordinance, AB SCADA upgrade, and AC tobacco and alternative nicotine products. I will ask trustee Ricky to talk briefly on compensation, and then I'll ask the administrator to talk on SCADA, and I'll ask council to talk briefly on tobacco and alternative nicotine products. Randy, anything on compensation?
Just a, just a quick one. In accordance with our budget, we, the compensation committee went through, took a look, took your guidance that you've given us on compensation and bonuses. And that is what we have done.
Thank you. And I'm confident, and I want to thank trustee Ricky for making sure this is the case. We seek to pay competitively to keep and retain top talent. I think we are a good place to work here. I think we bear a fair credit.
That's right.
SCADA upgrade, Karen, would you like to comment on that, please?
Sure. The control system for the village's water treatment plant, low stations, they were installed almost 20 years ago now, and then they've been failing on more frequent cases. So we requested proposals from two highly regarded firms, and the supervisory control and data acquisition system, AKA SCADA or SCADA, however you prefer to pronounce it, we are recommending an Energenics contract for them to install this radio operating system.
Terrific. And AC tobacco and?
Oh, totally.
They're having their own meeting when it's at.
Jim, we need you to talk about AC.
Yes, I'm sorry. The, so this is kind of, this is how this legislation has followed kind of an interesting path that I actually haven't seen in my career before, is it was first vetoed by Governor Robert, because he felt that if Illinois would lose sales, tobacco sales to Indiana. And then, and before that veto, the legislature vetoed that bill, it actually, a new legislature was in place, and they basically passed it again and sent it to the governor. And Judge, Governor Prisker signed it. And so we now, in April, first week of April. And so the village has tobacco control and alternative nicotine product regulations in our village code. And this is just updating the, updating the age, minimum age requirement from 18 to 21.
Are there questions on agenda items A, B, or C for trustee Ricky, or administrator Dolman, or councilman? There being none, chair would like a motion to reconsider and block agenda items A, B, and C as stated in the recommended actions for the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So.
Moved by trustee Shaw, seconded by trustee Mitchell. Thank you both gentlemen. I'll ask the clerk to please call the board.
Trustee Shawler?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Ricky?
Aye.
Sorry, President Richardson.
Chair would like to announce, consent that the clerk be authorized to enter the appropriate ordinance numbers in agenda items A, B, and C for purposes of the record. Objection, so were. Chair would like a motion to briefly recess, and we can chat with our guests a little bit. I'm sorry, we have a break to provide some hospitality and some pressure. We do want to thank you, and we'll reconvene in about 10 minutes. We stand in recess. Instead of chair, let's make reconvene. I want to thank the board for the courtesy of allowing that brief recess. It is wonderful to see these young people so talented, which is very, very. And I want to thank the administrator that compliments of the veterans and Kathleen Scott's report, and these young people putting out a bit of more.
Totally last.
No. That was, that was too perfect. That was just too perfect.
That's right. We are now on agenda item number nine. For purposes of the record, we have reconvened at 8:21. And that's the treasurer's report, and Mrs. Hirsch.
Good evening.
Alvin Grant Shaw.
I babysit all day on Monday. It was very special. I had a story, I shared it with some of the group, but I won't go into that right now.
Is he sleeping through the night for your son and your daughter?
He sleeps from 10 until 6.
That's awesome.
Gets up and sleeps until 9. But during the day, he naps very little. So if you're the babysitter from 8 to 6 during the day, you're on, you're on call.
Rocking.
All of about an hour and a half. He's really, really.
You don't have to nap in the afternoon till you go to college.
I always, I just, I'll take a nap.
That's right. I actually, I, I, it's not like you never answer calls between 2:00 and 4:00.
So you have a trust.
That's right. I always tripped about going to college, mostly when I fell asleep in high school. Agenda item, the treasurer is recognized.
Okay, thank you. So before us tonight, we have the financial statements prepared and reviewed for the 12 months ended April 30, 2019. So this is a special time. We get to review all 12 months at one time. You'll note the cover does say pre-audit as of 5/20/19. So these numbers have not been to our auditors. Village accountant Deb Vernon and I worked very hard to be sure we took all that, brought in all the end of year adjustments. We're very confident that we'll be nothing material that does come forth. There'll be some small adjustments, but nothing material. Just to put that before you there. So on page two, looking at the flash report, we'll see we have assets of $2,463,000. Of course, my liabilities is $695,000. Our equity at $1,768,000. So that our assets equal our liabilities at $2,463,000. Total revenues for the 12 months ended April 30 are $3,338,000. Total expenses are $3,036,000, for a net income of $302,000. I'd say that compares at this point last year, net income for the fiscal year ended 2018 was $218,000. So as we've done each month in the past, we sort of, we break out what we call our extraordinary one-time items, come up what we refer to as our regular operations and income or loss. And you'll see that's $328,000 compared to this point last year to about $41,000. So yeah, overall, our net income for this year was $302,000. So there's nothing.
Does that, does that net income, does that effectively become part of the revenue fund?
It's, it's straight to fund balance.
Okay.
Great question. Correct. Yes. And we'll get further into how we budgeted and so forth. But this is, you know, once again, end of the quarter, end of the year. So on page 23 and 24, I'll just sort of segue real quick, and let's get a little bit out of order for the report. But we do have our quarterly maintenance, our maintenance rolling down by quarter. And we've done this for the past couple of years to benefit the trustees to see how, it's a pretty big number in our balance sheet, or excuse me, our income statement is about $470,000. So you can see the different vendors that make up that, what we call the non-MFT road maintenance. So if you have any questions on those vendors, I can certainly address that. The very last page, I think, I believe it's page 24 of your report, you'll see impact fees used of, and those are the different vendors that we spent our impact fees with for various road work. Okay, so flipping back, I'm sorry, let me do that, back to page, go back to the page 10 and 11, take a look at the budget to actual report. Now, we've discussed the village performance at length over there. We've had many budget meetings up until this past meeting when we actually presented the budget to the board and was adopted. So we've really discussed all these numbers in length. But I just want to say that the village is doing a great job of managing to its budget. Revenues are slightly higher than budgeted, and expenses are slightly below than budgeted. So that's like the perfect scenario that we had when you're budgeting. We try to be a little bit conservative on the revenue side. There was one expense item that was higher, and that was the purchase of the front of lane property. That was not originally budgeted, because that came up as an opportunity during the course of the year. Other than that, you know, take a look, column four of page 10 and 11, you'll see that varies in actual budget. In most cases, you know, almost all the way down the pages, it's a positive number. But just to highlight that, that would be important. And just another thing to note, in when we were developing our fiscal 2020 plan, we focused heavily on what we call our estimated actual year-end income. And that was important. We were working with the budget about five months, four months before year-end, but we needed to focus on what our fund balance would be after the budget was done. So we had a sort of taken assumption what our estimated annual income would be. And that was a pivotal number in all our budgeting talks. I just want to report to you how we did on what we would call that estimated number. So the estimate, the actual revenue for fiscal year 19 is $302,000. And you'll see that number on the bottom of page 11, column two, where that is number, revenues over expenditure is $301,587,000. And that's $56,000 higher than the number we're using during budgeting. We were using 246. So I just wanted to let you know that we're very comfortable with how we went through the budgeting process. We're happy, we're in it with fund balance. You know, it's a tough game, and that's not a game. It's a tough, you know, kind of job to keep estimating, keep changing estimates. Village accountant Deb Vernon, she does a great job. Each month, we do it monthly. We sort of check where we're at and, you know, keep, keep on track. So I just wanted to point it out, because that was a pivotal, pivotal number in our budget formation. So before I move on from that, are there any other questions I, that we have about the fiscal year 12 months? So page 12, we'll just admit the motor fuel tax fund, it's currently about $248,000 in there for use. That fund's going to take a break over the next year. You can see, as we, since we finished our year on page 15, that we actually budget our variance about $55,000. We did slightly better than expected for the motor fuel tax fund as well. tax fund as well. We can move to the water sewer fund, that's started with page sixteen, and we have net current assets of $1,517,000, that's taking our current assets less our current liabilities. That's our, you know, sort of our cash available on hand for any needed repairs, large repairs that we, that will come up as infrastructure ages over the course of the years. On page nineteen, you can see that the fund performed very well against budget, as the other funds have done. Part of that stood at a price than anticipated on the iron filter removal, and the other part really is because we moved the SCADA system from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year 2020. Okay, any questions? And that's pretty much it, that's my report for the financial statements, but before we move on to the warrants, wondering if there's any more questions on this. Okay, I'll continue now, we'll look at the warrants, whether accounts payable warrants. Warrant A, the first thing I'll note is, all of our 2020 donation requests are on warrant A this evening, and those, that budgeted amount is $12,000, and the, those presented due to ninety equal $11,764, and they're sort of scattered these, and this is out of medical, they're scattered, scattered, you know, throughout, but I will mention who they are. It's Barrington Council on Aging, Barrington Township for the Pace All Right, Citizens for Conservation, the Flint Creek Spring Creek Watershed, Man in Heaven, and budgets of LPS. So that's, that was presented to the board and worked on with Trusty Reapley for the donation policy that we have in place. Also, you'll note that there's a fiscal year 2019 mark in the far right column, those are any expenses that relate to 2019, fiscal year 2019, those have been accrued, and those were picked up in the financial statements that you had before you tonight, with the exception of one of those on, on warrant B, so again, you have that before the financial statements are presented, so that will be accrued before the auditors arrive to finish the audit. There's just one more invoice to mention on warrant A, it's Client First, Client First Computer Consulting, it's a little bit high, because it's within budget, it's work that's been done, $1,025, I just mentioned it because of the amount that that work was done and budgeted, it's on our IT assessment. And then for warrant B, there's a few more items that reserve some special notes, two checks for Alfredo's telephone service, one for the security camera for the village hall at $2,939.50, and one for the water sewer fund, it's a security camera at one of the water sewer, water sewer plant, $1,310.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, yeah, thank you. Both budgeted in our fiscal year 2020 budget. Two requests in there for Cuban Township, this culvert replacements, $2,645 and $2,545, and I wonder if they're replacing their driveways, and I think it's village policy to work on the culverts at that time, is that...
Yeah, our policy has been, if somebody's ready to do a toll driveway replacement, I'll go out and check to see if the culvert is, it's an old corrugated metal pipe, we will replace it with a PVC SDR-26 pipe.
Okay, and then lastly, there's requesting tonight to Energenics for $1,499.95, and that was a precursor to this SCADA system, and that was approved earlier today, that was a, a little bit work, work done before the, I think, work is done. And that's really it, that's all I got, any questions? I think there are no questions.
I'm pleased with you. Are there questions from the treasurer this evening?
And then just one last thing, auditors, we're out yesterday for the first day of field work, Deb Vernon's told me that they left very happy, and I'm well, but I just go on to the weekend's field work and...
Grant Horace said, very good.
They're coming back.
Don't get mad. They arrived, got a whole folder ready for them, and they go in their office, and they do their work, and they leave happy, so.
That's like going to the dentist and no gouties.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If there are any further questions, then Chair will ask for a motion to approve and block Agenda Items nine, A through C. A, approve the financial statements as of April 30, 2019. B, pay bills in the amount of $169,090.16, as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated June 5, 2019. And C, pay bills at the amount of $43,189.26, as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated June 5, 2019, may have a motion to block. So moved by Trusty Thompson, thank you both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the robe.
Trusty Reapley?
Aye.
Trusty Thompson?
Yes.
Trusty Mitchell?
Yes.
Trusty Schaller?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Agenda item ten is the administrator's report.
Sure, I'll start out with the capital bill, you've probably been reading a lot about in the paper. We did send letters to our representatives requesting funds, they were not, we didn't get any money in the capital, so. Our neighbors at Barrington Hills received some money for replacement backup generators, and Deer Park received some money for implementing some of their stormwater management plan, there was some severe flooding, and they had a study done a few years ago, specifically flooding, so it doesn't look like they were funding any local road work, which is what we are asking for. On to other things.
Our, our guys, their response, did you correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Me, that, our, our lobbyists at Tidelity, plus also our two state reps in our states there.
Yes, I mean, they, they received them, they asked questions, you know, but just, I don't think they were passing out over the local road. Bay Hop will be hosting a free training session on prevention of sexual harassment, all of our staff, people will be attending at different times, so we have power to the village hall. I am strongly encouraging that all trustees and land commissioners attend, you might have, I sent out an email today, so take a look at that, and if one of those times their dates work, will you let me know, and I will RSVP for you, and that is needed by Monday, the response. Last week, Chief Crager spoke at an event, and was given a plaque early here in his adoption of, it's called NFPA 13D, which is basically the sprinkler system, and it's a, it's a residential sprinkler design standard, so he received a plaque, and he gave it to us, and we put it near in his office, so. And with May being the wettest record of the month, and temperatures starting to go up a little bit, we're bracing for an intense start of mosquitoes season here in Illinois. If, if the weather conditions hold, we're expecting to see lots of those little creatures. We would encourage residents to dump any water they see standing on their property, it could be like water in a burb bath, you know, change that every day, it could be water in a pot that you haven't gotten around to finding a pot yet. They're calling it tip and toss to fight the bite, and our friends at Clark have said larval source reduction, so that's the baby mosquitoes, to prevent them from hatching, is the single most important thing that residents can do to reduce the amount of mosquitoes. So it needs larva siding, it needs spraying, it's getting rid of the water that's standing and stagnant on your property, so. Their website has more information, we'll be sharing it on ours as well.
What is that water in the culvert?
Um, yeah, like, in the culvert, like under your driveway, yeah, so in towns that have storm sewers, the standing water that's in catch basins, the catch, that's the sum of the catch basin, those are one of the largest producers of mosquitoes in, in, in highly populated areas that have storm sewers. So Clark does larva siding, homeowners can do it too, yeah, mosquito dumpsters.
Do the dog for.
I had great success with that, and I relay that to homeowners, you know, if they have any standing water, to, to use it, so, and then last for a few months, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I was recently contacted by a venturing scout, I've never heard that name before, it's, it's part of the Cub Scouts, Tyler Cass, and she's interested in doing a project to build a butterfly garden, someplace in our village. She came to my attention through Tony Kircher, who's the cub master of 229 North Barrington, who said, quote, "She's a terrific young woman that is known for her pack and a share of talents before with my young Cub Scouts. This project is part of her goal to earn the prestigious Summit Award." And her idea is to lead the building of this garden with Cub Scouts, she's, I think, eighteen years old, and so she would be working with Cub Scouts who are five to ten years old, and then to plan the garden, to raise the funds, to build the garden, to build the garden, but not only that, for entering into, I guess, in a group or something, that the Cub Scouts continually maintain that garden as long as that Cub Scout pack is around. I'll be meeting with her, we've got a date set up on a Saturday, a couple of weeks from now, to brainstorm on a couple of different sites of potential, and I'll get back to you all about what may happen there.
Need assistance with that, Phil Wester, and all the, as they just established the butterfly garden next to the beach, so if you might be able to provide some insight into what's necessary, or what they recommend?
Right, thank you. That's the end of my report.
Are there questions from the administrator? There being none, we move to Agenda Item number eleven, which is the press report.
I just have a reminder that open burning of leaves and small branches on private property ended May 31st, and I will resume again on October 1st.
Agenda item twelve reports of standing committees on combine A and D, my reports. Kathleen Scott basically gave the branding and communications report in terms of her highlights of her focus, we're going to give kudos and thanks to Trusty Thompson for leading that effort. I know Trusty Burke will enjoy reading that as well, along with the work done by our cast of friends. Two items, I attended the Community Leaders of America Conference in mid-May outside of Denver, Winchester, Colorado, and I attend those things at my own expense, Community Leaders of America functions as the Republican mayor's, although I attend the Democratic mayor's one for clients as well. And interesting how everybody around the country is grappling with flood control, big problem everywhere, and separately, the marijuana legalization thing. My rapid pedestrian views aside, you know, all of us in the municipal life have decisions to handle, some of us, and it's not a law in our state, it's happening more and more. I am way to, I am intended to be set to be speaker next month, and again, I attended at my own expense of the Local Government Association of the United Kingdom, I'm going to be over there anyway, and Kathleen stuff couldn't have come at a better time, because they want me to talk about integrating green spaces to communities. They'll regret that. I, I'm sure that I won't set Anglo-American relations any farther back than the word 1812 did. So I will report back to that. I get great satisfaction out of those extracurricular activities, and frankly, appreciate the chance to trade notes with people from other parts of the country, to see if there are regional differences. A lot of Northern Illinois mayors participate in some, some, oh, the US conference when I attend, and the community leaders, we get to see an awful lot of them, and it's, it's just nice to get that different perspective, but yet with the same kind of responsibility. I will now, Trusty Thompson, twelve B, Community Relations, Special Events, and Veterans Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, Village Administrator Karen Don Lane, Village Clerk and Executive Assistant Lisa, and Tuapa and I are close to having a date for a music event at Friar Fire.
Wonderful.
We're close. So we'll, we're still working on that, hopefully we'll have something done as quickly as we can, so we can, since it would be in July, the Lake Barrington Shores newsletter, deadline is June 10th, which is Monday.
And our newsletter will go out shortly thereafter.
Okay, so we'll see if we can get that done this week. Also, regarding that concert night, I've contacted Andrew Wilson of Lake Water to have not spoken directly with him, but I've left him several messages about them sponsoring the event by bringing water for people to drink, and obviously giving him an opportunity to set up a display, et cetera, so we'll see what happens with that. And Karen has been talking to Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce to see how they might be able to find some sponsors for us as well. The goal, of course, is to completely eradicate, eliminate any costs on our part, see where we go. Next, Veterans of Lake Barrington Shores Annual Memorial Day Ceremony was held indoors as if we were outdoors, and you have to sit down in your chair, you'd probably end up on the grass, it was so wet. President Richardson, Village Administrator Karen Don Lane, trustees Schaller and Reapley were there as well, and we thank them all very much for coming, and we had over three hundred and forty people there. I brought along a flyer, this is, shows the guest speaker, Navy Captain Melissa Barnett, Adventures of Navy News from the perspective, you want to pass that on, just take a look at it. And then one final, and that is, previously I talked a little bit about EV charging stations, we're getting a little further down the line on that, Trusty Burke is going to be speaking with Speedway, see if they might be interested, and I've talked to a couple of other people, we're clearly a distance away from having anything, but at least I want to report that we are with them, so. I'll pass this note, and that's all I have for this.
Thank you very, very much. Questions for Trusty Thompson? Twelve C, there really is, and he's not here this evening, so Karen, do you have anything to report on his behalf?
Uh, no, other than tell me he was looking forward to reading through that report.
Okay. Twelve E, Finance, HR, Administration, Trusty Reapley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything specifically other than to thank, Debbie in particular, but also paying for the great work, you know, closing out the budget, and also the work to get the, the one ready for next year as well, so I thank you both for your, your work, and Karen as well. Well, a personal one, I'll just want to say a couple of words about something that you have mentioned, President Richardson. Seventy-five years ago, right now, about 20,000 paratroopers were going into France on the D-Day invasion. They were both Americans out of the eighty-second Airborne and the hundred-first Airborne Divisions, and then the British had an Airborne Division that jumped in as well, and that, in the large part, was reenacted today on that battlefield. And one of, one of whom, two of whom were in their nineties, they jumped, jumped in tandem with, with key paratroopers from their own countries. Canadians went ashore, as you know, Brits went ashore, and Sword Beach, Americans went ashore, Omaha Beach with the Twenty-Ninth Division and the First Infantry Division, two Ranger battalion, the Fifth Rangers, under Lieutenant Colonel Major Schneider in Bendin, the Second Ranger battalion, known as Red Rangers, went ashore at Point du Hoc, and on a round of band around Point du Hoc at Utah Beach, the Fourth Infantry Division went ashore in a relatively likely defended area, and they didn't suffer nearly the casualties that the Twenty-Ninth and the First Division were shown. The first elements to go in were the staffers or engineers that going to cut the wires and to remove obstacles on the vehicles if they can. They went in at midnight, which is about, about the time they started their campaign in the early seventies, five years ago. And about right now, it's about a quarter to four in the morning in Normandy, it's just starting to daylight, remember this is June, and they have a lot of, a lot of, and that ended, but almost all those troops will table us along this night of their lives, and those that were able to survive. In total, in the first forty-eight hours, 140,000 people went ashore, either through the air, the lighters, parachutes, or across the beach, and so we owe them all the debt, debt gratitude for their tremendous sacrifice on this day, seventy-five years.
Amen.
And as a former Ranger myself, Airborne Ranger, I have a lot of sympathy for anybody that jumps out into a hostile, hostile landing zone in the middle of the night of a full combat, of, of parachute in the back, that's really... combat load, a parachute in the back, that's really.
Randy, what would all that equip weigh on a young twenty-two-year-old paratrooper's body?
Depending on if you're carrying, how much animal you're carrying, but it's somewhere between seventy-five, a hundred and fifty pounds. And they want to get it off.
Wow. Wow. And I, do you have thoughts on, there was a lot of division within the German general staff over, over how to prepare, and then the Fifteenth Army was kept out at Pala Kala and wouldn't be deployed, they didn't want to make it up. How much of that can you comment on from your study of history?
Well, they, Hitler told the generals they weren't going to come, come there when they were going to Pala Kala, so he would not, the generals were afraid to do what's called counterattack. Although they were getting messages, hey, these guys are out here, you ought to see what we're looking at, all those ships out, this is the real deal. The higher rank of the general officers in the German army would not release counterattack forces. Although they were heavily defended, particularly in Omaha and June and Sword, and as you know, we lost about five thousand casualties the first day.
A lot of gold stars that day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve F, open spaces in village facilities, trustee Mitchell. No report this time. Okay. And welcome home. We've been missing you. You've been in France, you've been in Maine.
Mexico.
Mexico. All kinds of places.
Salute everywhere.
Yeah.
We're gonna travel.
They are not glad you're home in Lake Barrington.
I'm glad to be back home.
We blamed a lot of stuff on you while you were.
I knew it. I could feel it. I could feel it.
Yeah, with all this flooding. Oh, not late on you. Twelve G, public safety, can you release, trustee Schaller?
Well, at six fifteen in the morning, trustee Thompson and myself headed us to Liberty Hill for the official retirement of Chip Reed. This has been our day shift deputy sheriff in this area. And roll call begins at six fifteen in the morning. And so it was raining, but we were there and it was, I'm glad that we, we were there. Chip had been with the department over thirty years and it was just kind of neat with a retirement and to meet a lot of the other deputy sheriffs, the other sheriff, and so it was, it was a neat little event that we had. And I think Chip appreciated the fact that the village was represented and his retirement. We do have a new deputy sheriff I have not met, Brett Legenta, who has been replaced Chip, but he's the, the main shift person for North Barrington and Lake Barrington on the first shift each day. Robin Stankiewicz, who was here this afternoon, Chip, she was here briefly. They had a couple accidents, I think it was one down to fourteen in Cuba that she was investigating. So she apologized for not sticking around when she was here earlier. I am met with Lieutenant Scott Kerr, tried to meet with, with those people periodically as I think Karen does too. Had coffee with the deputy chief, Chris Thompson, as well. Just to find out, find out what's going on and whatever we can do to assist. The veterans thing, we get the report, you know, there was a burglary from a motor vehicle, theft of a mistaked property, deceptive bad check, first offense last month in this area, criminal damage to property, border protection. Those are some of the routine things that they investigate. We did have an accident, I think out of fifty-nine, on LBS the other night. Apparently was not serious, but still, again, we're privileged and happy to have a county sheriff's department as our police department. And in regards to that, Mr. Eric Dahl Lang has also set up how to handle active shooter situations and they will be conducting that deputy FOI, I believe, next month, July ninth, prior to our village court meeting, just to go through a session of what happened if somebody came in here with guns blazing, where do we go, other than duck behind the counter?
We still have the bear spray, I mean.
You'll eat a bear, stop by and take a look. As far as the American countryside fire protection district, Keith Hanson's been re-elected as the chair of their board trustees. They are still concerned with Station Three after Cook County turned down their request to build one next to Perry Middle School. So they're investigating another location as to where they could go with regards to that. I did not, I missed the condo fire district meeting, but plan to go to both of those this month. And as far as Lake Barrington Shores, we had our annual meeting last night. Thus, the village accommodates us by having this meeting today instead of the first Tuesday. So that annual meeting was yesterday. John Hathaway has opted not to seek reelection as president. So we have a new president, Ed Stogensen, S.T.O.G.E.N.S.O.M., who's the president of condo six. Will be the new president of Lake Barrington Shores. Haven't heard much from the entree, the tall grass, as we indicated last month. Captain Schwann has left Taylor Morrison and is working, I believe, with another company closer to her home. I spoke with Abby Kane today. She gave me a report that actually they had a closing in April. They have two new closings in May. They have one more closing in June and one more in July. So they're selling some properties there. They have two spec homes, one's a ranch and the other one is a two-story, but has a first-floor master. And they hope to have their additional spec homes built by this fall. Their sales center, however, is temporarily closed. Currently, they have trouble with the, the wood flooring. They have to replace all the flooring in that main home. So they're, they're working out of other areas, but that's gotta be an expense over a period of time. But it's, it's good to hear that Tall Grass is, is doing well. That's basically an amber report.
Other questions? Okay. Karen, is there any report that trustee Burke has provided? If not, we'll wait until next one.
Yeah, no, the rolling infrastructure, basically what you've seen in the last week.
Okay. There is no agenda, there's no business under bid I, thirteen of orders will be due until fifteen, which is resolutions. Unless the administrator has set this conversation up, I believe you're the best person to do that.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this more in depth than the, uh, getting the whole meeting, but the state of Illinois IDNR has sent a grant agreement to us. As you recall, we applied for this last fall, actually before we owned the property, because we didn't close on the property until December. And then in January, I went down to Springfield to give a presentation. We received notice in February that we would be awarded the grant, and within thirty days we'd hear from them. So we finally did last Friday, but I think they're a little bit behind on everything. But this is the actual paperwork. Attorney Dayton has gone through it. He's prepared the resolution, which is something that we have to do in order to accept the grant and report.
Is there any counsel like Dan O'Gra?
Uh, not, not really. There's, there's a lot of technical attachments to the grant agreement, but they're, I guess it's one of those things where if you want the money and sign up here and the, and, but they're very standard. I mean, it's, I think it's probably the fourth or fifth asset I've been through and the, and the, the attachments have gotten longer, but they're essentially the same in terms of our obligations.
Are there questions for the administrator or for counsel? If not, then chair would like a motion to approve the resolution number two thousand nineteen dash R dash.
Nine.
Nine, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Thompson. Clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes.
Agenda sixteen, new business, Featherling Park Design, I'll be able to be featured.
Sure. Applied Environmental Services, AES, that's the firm. We worked with the recently successful Ozley grant application for the development of Featherling Park. We are very pleased with the extent of their expertise in these types of projects. And in addition, the project manager lives less than three miles from the site, which is very helpful when searching again. So we work very closely with them to prepare the concept design and the grant application. They've submitted a professional services proposal to do the work and is within the Ozley grant budget itself. So if we get this approved, we can start with the design.
Questions for the administrator? Chair would like a motion to second agenda.
I just wanted to make a comment as, this is not the first time the village has used a Applied Environmental Services. Many years ago, during the Nancy Smith administration, they were the go-to environmental firm relative to wetland delineations and waters, bodies of water.
Basic milking and other stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brett. Great to know that they've got a good record. The chair would like a motion to allow the village administrator to authorize the village administrator to execute a contract with AES in an amount not to exceed forty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to authorize the village administrator to execute related necessary corresponding documents. We have a motion.
So moved.
Seconded by trustee Mitchell, thank you both. Clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, second opportunity for the public to address the board on any matter, including no request, it's a limited closed session. So chair would like a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.